Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we have 5:30. I'm gonna call this meeting to order, please. This is the regular meeting of Tuesday, May the 7th, for the Board of Alderman. We're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by invocation by Alderman Vaughn, and then a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Good evening, our Father, good evening, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, good evening to the Holy Spirit, good evening to the heavenly family, our God, God, those who are your handmaid's servants, that you allowed your angels to watch you all day long, protecting us from all hurt, harm, and danger. The Lord, you blessed us to make it back to this upon a place to handle these affairs of the city. We just want to thank you for the angels. But most of all, we thank you for our big brother, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, the only God who loved the son. And when the cavalry paid the price for everything that we go through, he already paid the price, and we accept him as our replacement of Savior. We thank you for Jesus. And our Lord, we ask you that you forgive us of all our sins, those known and unknown sin and unseen. But bless us now, Father God, as we go into this evening tonight to handle these affairs to the city. And not let's not forget how we heal. We're here and elected by the peoples. And all that our decision will, most of all, satisfy you, and I know will make the peoples happy. Lord, move all sufferings from us. Let us look beyond what we think, how we think, how we do things. Let us be more concerned about the citizens of Starkville and the taxpayers, especially those that don't fix income. God, we know that you know all things, because you said that you were Almighty, all wise, all knowing, all powerful, all seeing, all hearing, all understanding God. You said you're a God that you won't put no murders down we can bear. But sometime, God, this burden get heavy. It don't get heavy from ourself. It get heavy from the leaders, where we are being oppressed it. But I know that you was a good God. I know you're God that say you're never leaving, nor would you forsake us, and we just thank you for being that good God. And I ask you, Father God, that you would just please be with us. I ask you that you would please fill this faith with your Holy Spirit. Whatever decision we make, Lord, whether it satisfy you or whether satisfy the peoples, let us stand on our own conviction. And, Father God, let us be wise in what we do and what we say. We give all praise and honor and glory to you because of who you are and what you are. We thank you for being our God, and we your servant, being our Father, and we live your childrens. We thank you for controlling our destiny, not leaving us in the hand of no man. Lord, we have belonged to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate you joining us this evening. We will move into approval of the official agenda and for the consented items. Do we have any changes to the official agenda or the consented items from the board members?
Mayor, may I?
Vice Mayor.
Here, under, on the agenda, let me get there to it. I see that we got a report about some fire on some trucks some time ago on the sanitation, I think, two residential trucks and a commercial truck and a limbo loader, and I know that's something that we need. And I'm gonna suggest, and I've seen the financing aspect of it, we can just put them in consent agenda, I request that with the financing information that we received from our clerk, I suggest we put them in consent.
Okay. Any concerns about putting that in consent? All right, I'm gonna ask Mr. Ware one thing that we had kinda waited for the work session to provide us a little more information. Mr. Ware, if you would, the ultimate choice of this is this, there's just one bidder who came forward, who met the requirements. Is that correct? Is that what we ended up determining?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so we're looking at the 10-day delivery time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you. That was all I wanted to be sure that we were clear about. Okay, any, okay, that one going on-
What about the term on the, three years or what?
Oh, the warranty term?
Warranty term, what is it, three years?
Three years.
Okay. Turn around in 10 days.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that one going on consent. Anything else, Vice Mayor?
Oh, there are a couple items under Human Resource, number eight and number nine.
Okay.
And number eight, it just needs to reflect, the minutes need to reflect grade 13, six month probationary period, right, Ms. Ashford? At $46,500 annual salary. And that would create the vacancy in number nine, so we can go ahead and put both of those in consent.
Okay, all right. Any objection to placing both of those on consent?
Object eight.
You object to eight?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, then we'll, well, if we're objecting to eight, then we can leave them both off, and that way we'll handle them both. All right. Anything further? Alderman Walker?
Under Parks, I'm okay, I believe, with item number one being on consent. I just had a question to-
Mr. Logan, would you come up, please?
If you don't mind. So, my understanding that the contract would be to look at pavilion restoration, bathroom at, and bathrooms and so forth at three of the different parks. So this first round of contract is to provide what exactly?
Provide the architectural services, basically to design those, and they are here, LPK is here. So yes, it would be a new restroom facility at Patriots Park, a new restroom facility at JL King Park, and then a renovation and bathroom, or bathroom and pavilion renovation and remodeling of the bathroom at Moncreef.
So is it going to be where we're getting conceptual drawings to then approve, or are we going straight to working type of drawings in this contract?
Conceptual first.
If you're gonna, would you-
Come on.
-come into place so that we have the record?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Good evening. Contract is for conceptual drawings. If approved and blessed, it's to take it all the way through construction documents to allow bidding and construction to meet the timeline desires of the city. We'll start with conceptual.
Name.
Ma'am?
Your name?
Bob Luke, for the record.
Thank you so much. That's quite all I, okay.
Thank you.
Jason, that answered?
It does, Mr. Luke. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Any other questions of the board? Okay, thank you so much. Okay, anything else, anyone else as it relates to the agenda and the consent agenda? Okay. Seeing none, entertain a motion for approval of the official agenda with the consented items as changed. I have a motion from Alderman Carver. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistro. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. And with that, I will read the consented items. I'm gonna open my water up here in case I need it. It's a long, long agenda for that. All right, we have number one, consideration of the minutes of the April 12th, 2019 meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the April 16th, 2019 meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville. Under Board Business, we have consideration of the proposal from River Science LLC to perform a runoff and detention analysis of Country Club Estates Phase 3 not to exceed $2,400 and authorize the mayor to approve an as-needed contract to provide analysis assistance study to the city engineer for other areas of town upon the review of the city attorney. Under Department Business, item two, planning, consideration of entering into a memorandum of agreement with the Mississippi Department of Archives and History, MDAH, to accept a certified local government grant, CLG, to upgrade the historic site management tool, HSMT, an online GIS database that offers public internet access to information about Mississippi's historic resources. Under Engineering, item one is consideration of approval of the College View Improvement Project, accepting the low bids from Simmons Erosion Control, Inc., in the amount of $233,343. Item two is consideration of acceptance of the lower bid of $835,515 for the 2019 Street Improvement Project, project number 19004, from Falcon Contracting Company Incorporated. Under Finance Administration, number two is approval of the election agreement between the City of Starkville and the Circuit Clerk of Octavah County for the use of TSX voting machines and related accessories in the May 30th, 2019 special election. Three is approval of the quote with election systems and software for the May 30th, 2019 special election for election support with the electronic voting at a cost not to exceed $4,500. Under Fire Department, we have, one, request permission to issue a commercial burn permit to weather its construction to burn cleared debris associated with a construction project located at Cornerstone Industrial Park. Under Human Resources, we have number one, which is consideration to allow the Stennis Institute of Government and Community Development in Mississippi State University to conduct a salary study for the City of Starkville at a cost of $2,577. Two is request authorization to advertise for a part-time receptionist in the Starkville Parks and Recreation Department. Three is request authorization to hire 24 seasonal lifeguards in the Parks and Recreation Department. Four is request authorization to hire three seasonal maintenance workers, Tradarius Meadow, Austin Brasher, and Damari Cooper in the Parks and Recreation Department. Five is request authorization to hire Alia Allen, Destin Gladney, and Kathy Sims as seasonal customer service representatives in the Starkville Utilities Department. Six is request authorization to hire Cody Dupree as a wastewater operator in the Starkville Utilities Department. Seven, request authorization to hire Todd Giles as utility locator technician in the Starkville Utilities Department. Number 10 is request authorization to hire Jamie Adams as certified firefighter and Mitch Graves as firefighter in the Starkville Fire Department, and request authorization to retain candidates from the selection process held on April 29th, 2019 for consideration to fill any additional vacant positions in the firefighter classification due to retirements, terminations, or approved additions to the fire department within a period of 90 days. Number 11 is request authorization of promotion of John McCarter to the rank of battalion chief, Roosevelt Harris to the rank of captain, Shadrick Hogan and Matt Wilson to the rank of lieutenant, Joshua Cox and Taurus Young to the rank of sergeant, and retain candidates from the promotion process held on April 29th, 30th, 2019 for consideration to fill any additional vacant position due to retirements, terminations, or approved additions to the police department within a period of six months. Number 12 is a request authorization to hire Clayton Perkins as a maintenance worker, number three, in the street department. Thirteen is request authorization to advertise for a part-time intern position for the Finance and Administration Department. Under IT, we have request approval for education reimbursement for Matthew Addy for network security certification. Parks, number one, consideration of a contract with LPK Architects PA for architectural services at JL King Park, Moncreef Park, and Patriots Park. Number two is consideration to authorize Helms Polyphone to repair drainage basins at the Starkville Sportsplex at a cost of $8,500, the lowest of two quotes. Under Police Department, we have consideration of Corporal Tyler Davis, Rashad Ruff, Sawyer Oaks, Nicholas Bean, Dante Thomas, Princeton Henderson, to attend the 18th Annual National Law Fit Challenge in South Haven, Mississippi, June 27th through the 29th, 2019, with advanced hotel and registration at a cost of $1,288.68 total. Number two is consideration to renew the mechanical service agreement with Brizlin, Inc., for the Police Department building for inspections and maintenance of equipment. Under Sanitation, we have request approval for consideration to purchase a knuckle boom loader and three garbage trucks, two rear loaders and one front loader for the Sanitation Environmental Services Department due to the three garbage trucks that burned on March 18th, 2019, and authorize a city clerk to advertise for leasing. Under Utilities, we have, one, request of the lowest and best quote from Wesco Distribution for the purchase of optical ground wire, material only, in the amount of $39,187.20. Two is request approval of lowest and best quote from GNC Supply Company for the purchase of material for the Roundhouse Fire Line in the amount of $5,394.75. Three is request authorization to purchase two kiosks from Howard Enterprise at a cost of $18,793 per kiosk, the best of two quotes based on a three-year life and transaction fees. Four is request authorization to implement the power supply contract and distribution generation amendatory agreement, interconnect agreement between EDR College View and the City of Starkville. Five, request authorization to commit required matching funds in the amount of $159,450 to be derived from Starkville Utilities upon the approval of Trimcane Sewage Lift Station Improvements Project by the Mississippi Development Authority and Appalachian Regional Commission. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor.
My pleasure. And then, under announcements, under Mayor's announcement, I have one employee introduction, if I may. This will be in the Police Department. Chief, Abrianna Martin. Ms. Martin, would you come up so we can see your lovely face and identify you, please, Mayor? The City of Starkville would like to introduce Abrianna Martin as our new radio operator records clerk for the Starkville Police Department. Abrianna was born and raised in Starkville. After graduating from Starkville High School, Abrianna attended Everest University, where she majored in criminal justice. Before joining the Starkville Police Department, she was a 911 dispatcher for Octavah County. During her free time, she enjoys reading, listening to music, spending time with her family, and she attends Peter's Rock Temple. Welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and then, May 14th is Police Officer Memorial Day, and we would like to recognize that. Obviously, we will not have a meeting before then, so I wanna make sure. Chief, do you have anything about Police Officer Memorial Day you'd like to share with us? Any activities occurring associated with that, please, sir?
Yes, ma'am. Greetings, Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Members of the board. On that day, we're gonna hold a memorial service about not more than 30 minutes in front of the Police Department out there in front of the plaza, just to memorize, remember all the slain officers, and of course, we just had one that was slain down in Biloxi a couple days ago. So, we're gonna be laying a wreath out there, and we'll fly the flags at half-mast, so you are all invited. The public is invited as well.
And it's at 10 o'clock?
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock, all right. Thank you very much, Chief. I appreciate that. And we certainly appreciate that service, so. All right, Board of Alderman, any comments from the board? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Very briefly, I got to the table tonight, and I saw a piece of correspondence here, and hopefully in the future that if anyone wants to address us, that we'll get it to the city clerk in time for the board's consideration, because in my opinion, when we get here in the evening's time, it's time for consideration and decision-making of all city matters. And Mayor, of course, this matters not properly before us, but I would think that the board's already spoken to this in all deference to this distinguished gentleman that sent this in to us, but I think, you know, in all due respect, this needs to be tended to the board and placed on the agenda or gotten to us in a very timely manner. We have a deadline for submission of items to the board, and the board has already spoken on this particular matter, so I just wanted to address that. I don't really care seeing all these documents when I get here, because we have a certain time period, and our deadlines need to be adhered to. That's why we have deadlines, so. And I just wanted just to say that, and I give all great respect to this distinguished gentleman that this correspondence is from, so just wanted to share that for the record.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, then we will move into citizens' comments. This is a time when we ask the, anyone who wishes to come speak to the board, it's a three-minute timeline, which we, or timeframe, which we will, we will keep that time. This is not an opportunity for us to talk back and forth, this is just an opportunity for citizens to tell us of their concerns or things that they would like to address us about. So, Mr. Turner?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Adam Tonnaworth, 7th. To the mayor, to the police chief, and to the NACP Octavah County.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
The Bible is my guide. If I didn't read my Bible, I'd probably be off the wall, but it keeps me stable. Also, I have two medications that I take for my seizures. Right now, I can walk Walgreen and get it, walk the vows and get my grocery and all, but if I missed this medication, I could be deceased, as I take two pills twice a day, and if I miss it, or if I get to the point where I can't get it, it could be tragic. Also, the poor conditions of sidewalks that lead to jail and the sidewalks that lead to funeral homes is very rough on people. I'll get to funeral home because I don't have, hard, nowhere to walk, and same way to jail, the same thing. And it's summertime, and we had an incident that happened a while ago, and someone got brave enough to take two church vans, and so that we, we don't know what to do, how to protect, but the summertime and criminals, they take whatever they can take.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Yes, Mayor.
Board, my name is John Tolliver, Ward 6. We're still eight months outside of our house, had air quality control tests, and it's still a situation that we're dealing with. We're spending, we spent over $20,000 trying to get stuff done, where you all haven't spent anything. But I'm listening to Mr. Turner, and Mr. Turner lives at Pecan Acres. What is about to happen at Pecan Acres is actually gentrification. You're gonna take him and everyone else over there, out of their living environment, and put them in a strange area, and try to make them fend for themselves as to get to their medication when they need to, as to get to the grocery store when they need to. I don't really think that's the best decision, but this is what happens, this is what happened with, with a lot of areas in town. You beautify, you build, and the taxes go up, and the people who live there can't afford to stay there anymore, so they're displaced. But someone from Alabama wants to buy Pecan Acres, so everybody will be displaced, and all of the housing authority or projects will be in the northwest corner of Starkville. That's gentrification by any definition, by any definition it is. And my question also is for this park. I know I can go to McKee Park to the baseball game, I like baseball, but I can go to McKee Park, and I can watch that game free. I can park free. This $24 million complex, will I be able to park free there? Will I be able to watch that game free there? Or will it cost me? Is there anything that you know that you're not telling us that we're gonna pay for? Because the math really doesn't add up. Two cent, three cent, at the end of, at the end of two years, you still haven't made over $3 million. That's a $24 million project. The money's gonna have to come from somewhere. You're not telling us something. We're gonna pay for it one way or another, and you're not telling us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tolliver.
I would like, maybe just to ask a question on the parking, or maybe director staff. It was my interpretation that tournament ball typically will have parking, if it does, it's associated with that tournament, tournament as far as rec league ball, I wouldn't assume would be in parking fee, but-
That'd be correct.
I would just, I would like some clarification on that in the future.
Well, and one of the things that I, if we're, you know, just having a quick conversation about this, is Thursday night, there's a forum at the Greensboro Center where all those, you know, opportunities to talk about the various aspects of it, because there are things that haven't been determined yet about, about that. But yeah, rec ball is, is never intended to be costing anything, so. Okay, all right. Anyone else? Anyone else? I believe this is gonna be a Mayor's Youth Council group.
Good evening. We are with the Mayor's Youth Council, and I'll let them introduce.
My name's Jalisa Outlaw.
Yes, it is, Ms. Outlaw. Nice to see you.
My name is Caitlin Neely.
Ms. Neely.
I'm Annis Gray.
Ms. Gray.
We have two more.
Okay. Are we shy?
Yeah.
Come on, ladies. Come on.
My name's Dashay Lee.
Hi, my name is April Guo-Yu.
Thank you. Okay.
We are with the Mayor's Youth Council, and first we wanted to start by saying thank you, for all of you for helping us get this far. We are coming towards the end of our year for the 2019, 2020 year, wait, no, I'm sorry, 2018, 2019 year. And we have had a blast this year doing community service activities and doing different things to give back and just enjoy and getting to know each other and what our community stands for. I just wanna say thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, Ms. Outlaw, if you'd like to bring it up here, I bet Alderman Vaughn would
be delighted to sign it for you. I think he has a working pen.
I'm not gonna say anything.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you all. We appreciate all you've done as part of the Mayor's Youth Council.
Taking my grandma out here.
I'm telling you to show up.
All right, thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak to the board? All right, seeing none, we will, we will come out of citizen comments. And we have one public appearance is Julie Baca. Ms. Baca?
As you just said, my name is Julie Baca. I'm a full-time resident homeowner in Starkville in Octavah Gardens. I'm a single mother. I have lived in my home for seven years with my two children, and I'm here to talk to you about a problem that affects not just every full-time resident homeowner in Starkville, but all who live here. It is a problem cities all over the nation have been grappling with in recent years and for which some have found solutions. Unfortunately, it is an insidious problem which begins silently and undetected, the effects not seen or felt immediately, so that any damage is done before the root problem is faced. I'm here to shine a light on the issue so that it grows undetected here no longer. It has a name, it is called Airbnb, a concept of which I was only barely familiar until recently. I've educated myself, however, and I will be sharing facts and figures I have discovered in my research, but first I want to tell you a very short story. It's my story, and because without my story, the facts and figures may be too easily forgotten when I leave here. The story begins shortly before my daughter was three years old, and on the way to school one morning, she asked an out-of-the-blue question, as children often do. "Mommy, when you grow up, do you have to get married?" I answered, "No, no, you do not," and I paused, deciding what to say next, when my seven-year-old son replied, "You don't have to get married when you grow up, but it's nice to have someone to talk to besides the neighbors." This anecdote contains two crucial elements of my story, children and their innocence and vulnerability, things that we as parents in a society are committed to protect and defend with our lives if necessary. Secondly, it contains the word neighbor. I ask you to pause and consider the meaning of this word. A neighbor may be many things. My son's idea of a neighbor came from seeing his mother talking to the neighbors. However, a neighbor may be someone you talk to daily or rarely at all. It may be a homeowner, it may be a renter, but the one commonly agreed-upon definition is that a neighbor resides near you. If the neighbor is a homeowner, maybe five years, maybe 10, maybe 15, 20. If a renter, maybe one to two years, maybe six months. If we really stretch it, three months, 30 days, not likely, but possible, but never someone who resides for one to two days and is gone. And then in another two to three days, a new, completely new neighbor who stays for one to two days, and then another, and then another, so that within a roughly six-week time span, 17 different complete strangers reside next to you. No, no one would call that a neighbor, one would call that a hotel, and it would have a sign, and the sign would say hotel, and it would be required to meet regulations established for the safety and security of the people staying in the hotel, as well as those residing near the hotel, and it would be only permitted in an area zone for business use. About one year ago, I thought I was getting a new neighbor, but I learned recently, accidentally to my great and unpleasant surprise, that I got a hotel. In the last six weeks, I've had, actually, it's now 26 new neighbors, but 17 at the time I wrote this. I live on a very narrow street, literally a stone's throw from my house to my neighbor. When the wife of the out-of-town couple who purchased the home, out-of-town couple who purchased the home introduced herself, she intimated that she and her family would be using their newly acquired property as a game house for football weekends. I graciously invited her into my home, as I would to any new neighbor, loaned her my tools, offered her other household items, offered to look after the home for any unusual activity. When game season ended November, I began to notice other people staying in the house, who I naively assumed to be friends of the couple. Then within a week or two, someone different, then again, someone different, and on it went. Each time someone new occupied the dwelling, my daughter would ask, "Mama, who is that staying in the house now?" Because I work full-time, like many parents, she has to stay at home alone for various times of the afternoon and early evening, and like me, is rightly very concerned and observant about who inhabits the space that is so close to us. I told her initially, it must be a friend of the family, and then eventually, okay, maybe a friend of a friend. Though I was doing my best to reassure her all was okay, nothing to fear, my own discomfort was growing, yet I continued to hold to the belief that these were- was growing, yet I continued to hold to the belief that these were people at least known by the owners of the home. I began to think about talking with them the next time they visited. Then around February, a group of men with large work trucks and tools arrived. I assumed they were there to work on some portions of the home, not yet completed in renovations, but they were increasingly noisy and disruptive late into the evenings. And just as my discomfort level reached the level to, to complain, they were gone. There was a respite of a few days to a week or so with no one in the home, long enough for our general levels to recede. And then just as we felt peaceful, a new string of neighbors began to arrive, one after another, and then the following incident happened. I routinely make day trips out of my town, out of town for my work. I leave early in the morning at between 6:00 and 6:30 and return by early evening. On these days and nights, my son takes my daughter to school and picks her up. In the interest of time, I will summarize the incident by saying that it resulted in a guest in the neighboring hotel damaging my property, banging on my door at 6:45 a.m. after I had left the house and frightening my daughter to record. He then tried to negotiate the damage with my teenage son on the porch at 6:45 a.m., i.e. avoid all responsibility with my daughter shivering inside in fear, so that as I surmised later, this was so that he could quickly check out of his hotel that morning and be on his way. When I learned of the incident after returning home, I was furious. The fear in my daughter's voice when she recounted it put me over the edge. Though no harm came to either of my children, what would the next incident bring? When I spoke with a family member about it, she suggested that my neighbors were likely running an Airbnb. I only vaguely understood what this was, but I quickly educated myself. Within a few minutes, this is what I found on the Airbnb site. The address of the property, $95 a night, accommodates up to six guests. Imagine this is happening across the street from you. This is why I'm telling my story. Thirty-two amenities provided, including towels, sheets, coffee maker, et cetera. Since December, 17 different guests, and this is now probably 26, had commented on their stay, and that's just those who commented. I think what infuriated me the most was the description of my family-friendly neighborhood as a selling point. It is indeed family-friendly. However, my family's peace of mind, our quiet enjoyment of our home have been gradually eroding for months, while the safety and security of this family-friendly neighborhood, made so by people like me, was being both compromised and used to make a dollar. If you think this won't happen in your neighborhood, it likely already is. I found Airbnbs listed in residential neighborhoods all over the city, including such unlikely neighborhoods as Greenbrier, Sherwood Forest, and Country Club Estates. Cities across the country, indeed across the globe, have been grappling with the problems created by Airbnb for some time. Like many social and economic trends, Airbnb began as one seemingly innocuous thing, but has grown to become something different, its negative effects not fully anticipated. New York, San Francisco, New Orleans, Charleston, Miami, Barcelona, and Paris are among the cities that have all put controls in place to safeguard against the many unanticipated effects. In many of these cities, entire streets and neighborhoods have been taken over by outside developers, essentially creating unregulated, unsupervised hotel districts, meaning no business licenses, no safety inspections, inspections, none of the rules and regulations that have been established to protect guests and the full-time residents of the area, not to mention the total loss of any sense of neighborhood and community. Examples of how some cities are handling the issues. In New York, some of the strictest regulations in the country, renting out an entire apartment for less than 30 days is illegal and subject to large fines, period. A little closer to home in Ridgeland, Mississippi, Ridgeland ordinances specifically prohibit short-term home rentals without the approval of the mayor and the board of aldermen. The ordinance actually says you cannot rent for less than 30 days by any circumstance and renting for less than three months requires a special license from the city of Ridgeland. Others regulate where, how, and how often this may occur. For example, in Santa Monica, mandated hosts must live on the grounds during the renter's stay, register for a business license with the city, and pay the city's occupancy tax. Charleston, South Carolina, they are allowed only in mixed-use historic, that is, mixed residential and business use. Historic districts and the home itself must actually be on the national register. Again, some investment of the owner. All hosts must register with the city, live on the grounds, live on the grounds. A guest house is fine if they share the driveway with the host, but no more than four guests at a time, so they regulate the number of guests. In New Orleans, they're not allowed in the French Quarter, except for a very small strip along the Bourbon Street Entertainment District, and there they must be a primary residence of the owner and can be rented no more than 90 days, so they're limiting the, the number. And this is in New Orleans and the number of guests are limited. So to conclude, I came here tonight because I love my children, I love my home, I love my neighborhood, I love my community. There are many ways in which the problems created by Airbnb can be addressed and managed, but only if we as a city consciously acknowledge the problems and seek solutions. If we do not control the problem, it will control us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. The next thing we have on the agenda is public hearings. We have a number of public hearings and so we will go through these one by one. First one is a public hearing. It's the first public hearing on ordinance 2007-06, which is the City of Starkville Code, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Six, Section Two-Dash-One-Sixty-Four, amending the Board of Adjustments and Appeals process to allow for the reappointment of a sitting board member if applications for positions remain unfilled after advertising period has expired. Anyone on the board wish to comment before I open it as a public hearing? Okay? I'll go ahead and open it as a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to comment about this particular matter or this change in the ordinance now would be the time. Either for or against, you are welcome to come up now. Okay? Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. The next public hearing is public hearing in consideration of a conditional use 19-03, a request for conditional use to allow for residential dwelling units as part of a proposed mixed-use development located approximately 1,700 feet west of the intersection of Lynn Lane in South Montgomery on the north side of Lynn Lane in a C2 zoning district with a parcel number 201I00-013.00. Ms. Corbin, you will do us the honors this evening?
This is a conditional use request by 4JILP to allow for a use of dwelling multifamily in a proposed mixed-use development located approximately 1,700 feet west of the intersection of Lynn Lane in South Montgomery on the north side of Lynn Lane in a C2 zone. And you can see over here in the map, it is a parcel that's next to, I'm trying to think, what was the little business that was in that location?
It was the home business, the, there's a government business.
Yeah. The applicant is proposing to place a mixed-use building on the property. The building is proposed to have commercial units downstairs and four residential units upstairs. In a future phase, another residential building may be placed on the property and/or a third story may be added for additional four residential units. That will equal a total of eight residential units. And as you're aware with the previous conditional use, we don't currently have a mixed-use designation in our permanent and conditional use chart, so this use is required to go through conditional use as a dwelling multifamily. And 11 property owners of record within 300 feet of the subject property were notified directly by mail of this request. A public hearing notice was published in the Starkville Daily News on April 17, 2019, and a sign was posted on the property concurrent with publication of the notice. As of this date, the planning office has received one phone, one phone call requesting And this is just the site plan that went through the development review process. It's just kind of conceptual at this point. The building on the southern portion is the one that's being proposed in the initial phase as a mixed use. And this would be, this building to the north would be that future phase if it ends up building out. Appendix A, Article Six, Section One of the City Code of Ordinances provides five specific criteria for conditional use review and approval. The first criteria is land use compatibility. The proposed use as a dwelling multifamily could be considered a compatible use with adjacent properties. The property is currently zoned C2, general commercial. The 2016 comprehensive plan has the area's placetime listed as suburban corridor and multifamily housing is listed as a land use for the suburban corridor in the comprehensive plan. The second criteria is sufficient site size and adequate site specifications to accommodate the proposed use. The site is adequately sized to accommodate the proposed use. Three, proper use of mitigative techniques. There were none proposed. Four, hazardous wastes, no hazardous waste or materials would be generated, used, or stored at the site. And five, compliance with applicable laws and ordinances. And the applicant is responsible for obtaining all the proper permitting required by the city and the state. On April 9, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval of this request with one recommended condition, that the applicant shall have six months for the time, from the time of conditional use approval to obtain site plan approval by the city's development review committee.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. I have a quick question. The parking requirements that are, that are here, is that the same parking requirements that would end up coming with the suburban corridor?
Yes.
Once we adopt the placetime?
The residential off-street parking, are you speaking to that specifically?
Yes, the, the number of spaces required.
It'll be 1.25 per bedroom.
Okay. Any questions from board members? Alderman Walker.
Ms. Corbin, currently the only, if I'm correct, of the only places that we have mixed use by right is what is in the T districts.
Right.
I'm certainly, I think it could be appropriate on Lynn Lane to allow a mixed-use development. The concern I have is with the site plan, is with the conceptual site plan, and this may very well be conceptual. I would tend to think that if we were going to follow similar code where we have mixed use, that both the parking requirement and layout of the lot might also be something that would need to follow that. Specifically, if I'm thinking about the, the parking out front, if I'm thinking about that being a commercial space below, hopefully if it's gonna be commercial, they're gonna have high volume, high turnover. And having a dead-end, dead-end parking potentially could be problematic, not knowing what that space is planned to be and knowing that over time, commercial spaces may change. I think those are some concerns that I am hope, hope that would be addressed through the, through DRC if it hasn't already been brought up at that point. Having said that, I am certainly in favor of supporting the change, allowing this to be mixed use, but as it does come forward to plating and thinking about the design, I think there's, needs to be some comments made about both circulation and setback of lots to be something that would be more aligned with what we would have in our current mixed-use zoning. The other question I have is, it looks like one very large lot that runs from east to west and it looks like we're subdividing that lot?
Correct.
And it looks like the primary ingress, egress is from Lynn Lane and it looks like it's actually on the other lot, so is it going to be, assume that if the lot further to the east develops out, that it would be shared ingress, egress, and there would be no other ingress, egress allowed? Or is it a big enough lot where that might could occur?
That was what was presented at DRC. The access management would be something that the engineer could answer a little bit.
How about we ask the applicant to come forward? Dr. Kim, you may come forward as well, but the applicant is, is back here too, so maybe he will. Okay.
Jason Pepper for the record. To answer your question, that's the only access that's allowed by the new policy.
So it would be a shared access with if the other, if the other lot develops?
According to what happens to the east, I believe there is room for another access drive to the east, but this one, we don't know what's happening to the east.
And so that would be something that would be handled through the plat in terms of the access being on another property?
Correct. It'll be an easement. That's why we haven't filed a subdivision plan yet, it's back and forth on whose, the easement for the access. Thank you.
Dr. Kim, something you want to share with us, please? Thank you.
Yes, I believe that Emily was gonna actually mention about it at the end, but Planning and Zoning Commission recommended the board to approve this with a condition. And the condition is to obtain the site, site plan approval from the DRC within six months of this approval. So the DRC will actually address a lot of design issues at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kim. Anything else? Mr. Pepper?
No, Mr. Pepper.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Mr. Pepper, before I open it as a public hearing? None? Okay. Thank you. All right. If there's nothing else from the board, I will open this as a public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak in, either in favor or in opposition to this particular agenda item, now would be the time to do so. Okay? Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. And now up for consideration by the board, anyone have any discussion or a motion?
May I move approval?
A motion from Alderman Walker. Do I have a second?
Second.
I heard Alderman Carver. All right. Alderman Carver, I have a second from Alderman Carver. Further discussion? All those, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, with condition, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Thank you. I apologize. Thank you very much, City Clerk. All right. We have a motion, a second, no further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. By vote of five to, to, nothing, motion carries. All right. Item C is gonna be a public hearing in consideration of CU 19-04, conditional use request by Lee and Jennifer Carson to allow for a bed and breakfast inn to be located within an existing home at 607 Old West Point Road in a RE zone with a parcel number 117L-00-001.00. Ms. Corbin?
This is a conditional use request by Lee and Jennifer Carson to allow for a bed and breakfast inn to be located within an existing home at 607 Old West Point Road in a RE zone. Just to orient you to the area, it is this parcel when you're heading north towards Old West Point Road and general vacant land to the north.
How many acres is that, Ms. Corbin?
Let me see if I can find that. Give me just a second. The applicant may be better answer that.
Okay. That's fine. I'll just. Dr. Kim?
Yes, it's about 10 acre.
10 acres? Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I threw you off your game. I apologize.
It's in the staff report. This is a boundary survey of the site showing the house in relation to the property. And so you can see over on this side of the slide, that is the house, the subject property, and it has a larger parent parcel. The applicant is proposing to operate a bed and breakfast on the subject property and with a property zoned RE, it requires a conditional use. 28 property owners of record within 300 feet of the subject property were notified directly by mail of the request and a public hearing notice was published in the Starkville Daily News on April 17, 2019, and a sign was posted on the property concurrent with publication of the notice. As of the, as of this date, the planning office has received two phone calls requesting information and one letter against the request was submitted at the April 9 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, which is attachment seven of the staff report for your reference. And this is just another site plan. This was the site plan that was reviewed at Development Review Committee and it shows a proposed walkway. That's the only exterior addition to the historic portion of the property is this exterior covered area that will have a covered entrance from the parking lot that they're proposing to put. And there, I think the sidewalk connection as well was the other one in addition to And Article A, I'm sorry, excuse me. Appendix A, Article Six, Section One of the City's Code of Ordinances provides five specific criteria for a conditional use review and approval, the first being land use compatibility. The proposed use as a bed and breakfast inn could be considered a compatible use with the adjacent property. The 2016 comprehensive plan has the area's placetime listed as suburban, single-family. Two, sufficient site size and adequate site specifications to accommodate the proposed use. The site is adequately sized to accommodate, to accommodate the proposed use. And three, proper use of mitigative techniques. There were none proposed. Four, hazardous wastes, no hazardous waste or materials would be generated, used, or stored on the site. And five, compliance with applicable laws and ordinances. The applicant is responsible for obtaining all the proper permitting required by the city and state and following all of our city ordinances. On April 9, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval of this request with one condition, that the applicant shall have six months from the time of conditional use approval to obtain site plan approval by the city's development review committee.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Corbin. Any questions of the board members before I call up Mr. Carson? See if he wants to, Mr. or Mrs. Carson, I'm sorry, if they'd like to add anything to it. Nothing? Okay. Applicant, you want to come forward and, and give us a little flavor if you like?
Hi, Lee Carson. We're really excited about this property. The, the subject property is the Old Montgomery House and it was built in 1835. It is one of the three in the county that remain kind of in its original location that was built at that time period. And it's a project that's been in our minds for probably 20 years because over 20 years ago, we looked at possibly doing that then. We didn't feel like it was quite the right time and we moved on to other projects, but 20 years ago, it stayed in the Montgomery family the whole time till 20 years ago, so that's very significant. It hasn't been moved. It hasn't been altered much. There was an addition, the porch was taken in at some point in time on the structure, but the original structure is all still there intact. Judge Esche, the Esches lived in it for past 20 years, and they did an amazing job of renovating the house when they purchased it, and it's in wonderful shape. So, we're just strategically placing bathrooms in the existing bedrooms, we're updating everything on the ground floor to ADA compliance. There will be a handicap ADA compliant restroom as you go in. We plan on using the facility for events, weddings, things of that nature, and we also plan on, you know, having tours available, open it to the public so that people can experience, you know, one of these historic buildings. And so, we, we really love these buildings, and we feel like it's important to save them and also to find uses. To be able to save them, you have to find uses for them to continue, and we feel like this makes a viable use for the property that will sustain it for many years to come. So that's really the main, that's our main motivation for wanting to do it. We just, we love trying to save these buildings, and we hate when we see them torn down or even moved, so it's kind of nice to see this in its original structure.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any questions of the applicant? Alderman Walker?
I don't really have any questions, per se, but say, I think this is a, a great reuse of this historic home, and I'm very much going to be in support of this conditional use to allow this to, to occur, and I know with the conditions, as, as if it gets approved, will be that you have six months to, to do site plan review, but upfront, I would say, nice job working your parking around existing trees. You know, what a, what a, what a, what a novel idea. And so I think doing those types of things are going to really help, which is a fairly large parking lot, help make the, the scale of that feel like it's compatible. So, I think the, the size of the property, the location of the property, I think it would provide not only a great bed and breakfast, but an opportunity for other events to be able to host in Starkville. So, couldn't be more excited that somebody like yourself is going to be purchasing this property, so I know it'll be in, in good hands to maintain the historic character of, of the home, so I very much will be supportive this time.
Well, we're gonna have a lot of fun.
Right. Anyone else? No? Okay. I will open it as a public hearing now. It's an opportunity, anyone wishing to speak in favor of or in opposition to this quest, if you would identify yourself, and now, we, we do have timing, so in this case, we'll time it 15 minutes on the side that's in favor of, and 15 minutes on the side in opposition to, so...
I don't need 15 minutes.
Okay. All right. Well, we will, we will be timing.
It's good to see all of you. I've been in absence for about a year. My name is Francis McDavid, and I have sat through 40 years of Board of Aldermen meetings with students who were journalism majors, and as a journalist myself, so it's good, it's good to see you again, but I don't like to be on this side of the little bar here. I live two, three houses down from the Montgomery home, so this does affect me directly. I've lived in my home for 35 years, and I, like you, are very glad to see that that house will not be torn down and will not become a barren hill with scrunch-together houses or complexes that go on and on. I think the Carsons have found a good use for it, and so I would wish them well in that. I don't really oppose the idea of a bed and breakfast, but I do have some concerns that I would like you to think about. They indicated that there will be weddings there, and that is not something that happens often in neighborhoods. We live in a neighborhood that is quiet. I've lived there 35 years. We've not had weddings and events that would potentially be disruptive. The Esches occasionally did have large groups up there. I think they had RUF or somebody that would have an occasional bluegrass band, so I know that that wasn't particularly disruptive, but it is a concern, especially if it gets late into the night kind of things. Now, I understand you've got a noise ordinance that might control some of that, but we haven't lived through it yet. We don't know what kind of problems exist, so that's something that might have to be dealt with down the line. The other concern, I guess, would be traffic. You know, we, we don't know what the additional traffic might be. There's no way to predict that either. There are concerns. I would like you to be aware that in addition to the, what you were told, there were four people additional at the planning meeting. That was not in the record, and that's distressing to me that you got the impression that there was only two calls and one letter. There were additional people that live in the area that came to that meeting, and there were concerns. I think you might want to look at, by the way, what the record is on those meetings, because they gave you the record up to that meeting and then added the one letter that was presented. That's an aside, but I did want you to know there were additional concerns. The other thing that I want, that I would say is a major concern for those who live in the area, would be what will happen with the additional 10 acres that surround that house. It appears that this condition would only apply to the house itself, and that any additional changes would have to come, additional changes on the acreage would have to be approved through additional processes, but we would want to be, be very much assured of that, that before those changes took place. The thing that concerns me, I've watched, I've for 40 years, I've watched city government, and I know that once a change is made in a neighborhood, that opens the door for additional changes. The argument becomes, has the neighborhood changed? Is this the kind of change that you would be able to argue the neighborhood has changed? And so I think one of the concerns is, again, those weekend kind of housing, that where you've got a real transient kind of football weekend kind of neighborhood that might develop in that acreage. Now, that's not before you tonight, and I understand that, but I think that what is here would be your, you need to be aware, is this the kind of change in a neighborhood that you would start saying of the precedent has been set? So I do appreciate the Carsons for what they're doing. I think they've got a good plan, and like everybody in the community, I'm glad a historic structure is being saved for once. I know you're relieved to see that, because I know you hear about that constantly. So I just want to throw a couple of ideas out for you to be aware of. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McDavid.
Mayor, may I ask Ms. McDavid?
Vice Mayor, sir.
Ms. McDavid, just a question. You commended the Caushens for their plan that is on the table, but yet, at the same time, you indicated to us and in the record that you have concerns about the weddings, the traffic, and what happened with additional land with regard to the 10 acres, and you mentioned that others were in attendance at the Planning and Zoning hearing, and given the fact that the board's fixing to vote on this, so what are you asking us? I'll make sure I get it real clear from you. Are you asking us to, to vote yea for this, or are you asking us to vote nay for this?
I would say vote yea.
Want to be clear? Go ahead.
I do want, I do say yea, but I want you to be aware that down the line, I would hope this does not indicate this is a change in the neighborhood, and I think down the line, I think the neighbors would want to be assured that weddings and those type of events weren't a disruption to the neighborhood. When you think bed and breakfast, you think this is a place to go and sleep and eat breakfast. You don't necessarily think this is a place to go to a party, and I think, I think there is more on the table in their mind than a bed and breakfast in, in just the straight definition of it.
So just keep in mind that the board approved this tonight, and if there's something down the road about a change in the character of the neighborhood, just understand that we'll have to consider the applicable law at that time as to whatever it may be as relates to that particular situation, but I wanted to make sure the record was clear from use of property owner, whether you steward. So given your comments, and obviously, the only neighbor from this area, I'm going to support this, and the fact that you do not have any opposition, because I'm very cognizant and supportive of, of once property values and neighborhood values. I'm a very strong affirmative believer in property values, so I'm going to support this, not only, primarily, Mr. Carson has a great plan, but also given the fact that you're concurring and requesting the board to approve it, so I'll vote yea to support it with regard to those two things together.
I'd just say, I just really want to plant the seed for those other potential concerns down the line.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDavid. Alderman Walker?
Ms. David, I was just going to say too, thank you for bringing up those, those concerns. I think those are legitimate, and to the Vice Mayor's point, I think at some point in the future, if there were to be a request for looking at change in condition, that would be left to each individual Alderman. I will say that if I were in that position, I would not consider this change of condition in the neighborhood, primarily because it is only use of conditional uses that would be allowed in that. So in my mind, it would not warrant a change of condition in the neighborhood, but like the Vice Mayor said, that would be up to each, each Alderman to consider.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor or in opposition? Okay. Seeing none, we will close it as a public hearing and go into consideration at this point. Do I have a motion?
Move approval with the condition.
A motion from Alderman Walker with the condition. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I'm, I'm hearing stereo down here, Alderman Carver. Thank you. All right. Any further discussion from the board members? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Five oh, it's unanimous. Thank you so much. All right. Next public hearing. We have public hearing in consideration of CU 1905, a request for conditional use to allow for a mobile home to be located at 1605 Sand Road in an R5 zone with a parcel number 105-16-023.01. Ms. Corbin?
This is a conditional use request by Ms. Diane Jordan to allow for a mobile home to be located at 1605 Sand Road in a R5 zone. The applicant is proposing to place a mobile home on the subject property. The property is zone R5, and in order to place a mobile home, a conditional use is required per, per the city of Starkville's Permanent and Conditional Use chart. This property is located on 16th section land, which is owned by Starkville Tupperhill County School District. Five property owners of record within 300 feet of the subject property were notified directly by mail of this request. A public hearing notice was published in the Starkville Daily News on April 17th, 2019, and a sign was posted on the property concurrent with publication of the notice. As of this date, the planning office has received no phone calls about the request. Appendix A, Article 6, Section 1 of the city's Code of Ordinances provides five specific criteria for a conditional use for review and approval. Land use compatibility. The proposed use as a mobile home could be considered compatible use with adjacent property. The property is currently zone R5. The 2016 Comprehensive Plan has the area's place type listed as traditional neighborhood new, and a previous mobile home existed on this property. Two, sufficient site size and adequate site specifications to accommodate the proposed use. The site is adequately sized to accommodate the proposed use. And three, proper use of mitigated techniques, none proposed. Four, hazardous waste, no hazardous waste or materials will be generated, used, or stored at the site. And five, compliance with applicable laws and ordinances. The applicant is responsible for obtaining all the proper permitting required by the city and the state. On April 9th, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval of this request.
No conditions?
No.
All right. Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Corbin?
I was finna ask, was it any conditions?
I'm sorry? Oh, okay.
I was asking you about the question.
All right. If I see no question, I assume you are Ms. Jordan?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
No, ma'am, because I don't like standing up front and talking.
Ma'am?
She didn't like to stand up front and talk.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, I appreciate that, and, and if you don't want to stay up front and talk, then you certainly don't have to. I believe Ms. Corbin has represented your interest. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate you being here. Does the board have any questions of Ms. Jordan? Okay. Seeing none, then you can go, be comfortable in the audience if that, if that works for you. And I will call for a public hearing. Thank you. Any, any discussion from the board before I call for a public hearing? All right. Thank you. Seeing none, I will open this as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor or in opposition to this, now would be the opportunity. Are you wanting to come back and speak in favor of it, Ms. Jordan? Okay. No, you're fine. I'm sorry. I apologize. I didn't mean not to be clear. Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in favor or in opposition? All right. Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. Any discussion from the board, or do I have a motion?
Move approval.
I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Carver. Thank you, sir. All right. Any further discussion? All those, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. It is unanimous, Ms. Jordan. Thank you very much. All right. Next item is a public hearing in consideration of RZ 19-02, a request by Carpenter Court 2019 LP to rezone one split zone parcel from C1 Business and R5 Residential to R5 Residential located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Louisville Street and Sand Road with parcel 105B-00-001.05. Ms. Corbin?
This is a request by Carpenter Court 2019 LP to rezone one split zone parcel located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Louisville Street and Sand Road. The applicant is seeking to rezone from C1 Business and R5 Residential to R5 based on change in condition and public need. Under page one of our staff report, we incorrectly listed it as an error in the ordinance. The planning commission was uncomfortable with making that determination because the split zoning of the property has consistently been split zoned through the last three official zoning maps, so the applicant is arguing change in condition with public need. The property to the north is zone C1 and R5 and is vacant and multifamily. The property to the east is zone R5 and is currently multifamily. The property to the south is zone R5 and is currently multifamily. The property to the west is zone C1 and is currently vacant. Eleven property owners of record within 300 feet of the subject property were notified directly by mail of this request. Public hearing notice was published in the Starkville Daily News on April 17th, 2019. The cover sheet had listed the planning and zoning public hearing dates, so this is the correct date, and a sign was posted on the property concurrent with publication of the notice. As of this date, the planning office has received no phone calls regarding this request. Per Title 17, Chapter 1 of the Mississippi Code of 1972, as amended, in Appendix A, Article 4, Section A of the City of Starkville Code of Ordinances, the official zoning map may be amended only when one or more of the following conditions prevail. Error, there is a manifest error in the ordinance and need to correct the error and/or change in conditions with public need, and changing, changed or changing conditions in an existing area or in the planning area generally, or the increased or increasing need for commercial and manufacturing sites, or additional subdivision of open land into urban building sites, make a change in the ordinance necessary and desirable and in accord with the public need for orderly and harmonious growth. Within one mile of the subject property along Louisville Street and Sand Road, there have been two rezonings since the adoption of the 2013 zoning map. In March of 2018, on 288 Sand Road, it was rezoned from R5 to R6, and that's just south of this subject property. In June of 2018, the property on the west side of Louisville Street, south of Academy Road, was rezoned from R4 to C1. Consistency with the Comprehensive Plan. The proposed rezoning would generally be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies found in the city of, city's Comprehensive Plan. The 2016 Comprehensive Plan lists the subject property's place type as suburban center. Multifamily is listed as a possible use in suburban center place type. Land use compatibility. The proposed rezoning would be consistent, consistent and compatible with adjacent land uses in the vicinity. The subject property is bordered to the east and the south by multifamily development. And this slide lists the permitted and conditional uses for the existing zonings and for proposed zonings. On April 9th, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval based on change in condition and public need.
Okay. Anything from the board? Questions before I bring up the applicant? All right. Seeing none, is the applicant? We have no applicant? Really?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions of Ms. Corbin from the board?
This is the same applicant that did the rezoning for the corner of West Side Drive and Reed Road, just for reference point. This is an opportunity zone process they were going through.
Okay.
Is this the same type development?
It is, but I don't believe that the homeowner, the process to actually get a home to own the property is not the same. So, I think these are townhomes. There was a rendering in your packet of the proposed, and I think that's similar to maybe the New Albany one. Alderman Vaughn might can speak more to that, but the homeownership portion of it is not the same.
So, it's not the 15 years to...
Right.
Okay, and these are things that the applicant should be here to answer. All right, any discussion from the board? Do I have a motion from the board? Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, thank you very much. We'll open it as a public hearing at this point in time. Anyone having, anyone having anything to say about this particular project either in favor or in opposition, now would be the opportunity. Okay, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. Court members, do I have a motion from anyone? Okay, I have, I have no motion at this point in time, so we have a motion to table until the applicant can come? Is that an opportunity?
Move approval.
Move approval of tabling it until the applicant is available to be here with us? Okay. I have a motion to table from Alderman Carver. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Walker. Discussion?
I have one, not discussion, but it is a question. If we argued that there was no error in the map, is there, is there a physical, anything on that site that would lend itself to having that lot have been designated as split zoning? Is there a creek or any other type of natural feature?
No, and I mean, we looked at it at length in the planning and zoning meeting. We, I mean, Latimer can attest that we zoomed in, and it just seemed, trying to remember what the terminology they use. It was a prairie? Miss or do miss that?
Yeah, the commission was uncomfortable clearly saying it was a mistake, because if you look at that line, it's a real clean line. It looked to be a purposeful split all the way down that road with the frontage being differently zoned than the rear property, and so they were uncomfortable traveling under error.
All right, anything else?
No.
All right, I do have a motion and a second. Without further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's unanimous, motion carries. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Latimer. Ms. Corbin, just for housekeeping, of course, we'll have to renotice this as another public hearing, so make sure that's in the pipeline.
And please make sure that they're here next time. Not that I'm saying you didn't, but encourage them to be here. Thank you. All right, and last public hearing, but not least certainly is a public hearing consideration of rezoning 19-03, a request by Superior Patton, rezone one parcel from R1 Single Family to R6 Mobile Homes located plus or minus 250 feet west of the intersection of Rock Hill Road and Butler Road with parcel number 115-22-001.00. Ms. Corbin.
This is a request by Superior Patton to rezone one parcel from R1 Single Family to R6 Mobile Homes, and is located plus or minus 250 feet west of the intersection of Rock Hill Road and Butler Road. The applicant is seeking to rezone from R1 to R6 based on change in condition with public need. The property to the north are in the county or are currently undeveloped or are part of the city landfill. The property to the east is Zoned R1 and is currently single family with a mobile home. I'm sorry, that was the one to the south. The property to the south is Zoned R1 and is currently single family with a mobile home. The property to the west is Zoned M1 and is currently the entrance to the landfill. Ten property owners of record within 300 feet of the subject property were notified directly by mail of the request. Public hearing notice was published in the Starkville Daily News on April 17, 2019, and a sign was posted on the property concurrent with publication of the notice. As of this date, the planning office has received one letter against the request, which was hand-delivered to the planning department on April 4, with the signatures of three property owners in the area. Per Title 17, Chapter 1 of the Mississippi Code of 1972, as amended, in Appendix A Article 4, Section A of the City of Starkville Code of Ordinances, the official zoning map may be amended only when one or more of the following conditions prevail: error, there is no apparent error, or change in conditions. Changed or changing conditions in the existing area or in the planning area generally, or in the increase, or increasing need for commercial or manufacturing sites, or additional subdivision of open land into urban building sites, make a change in the ordinance necessary and desirable in accord with the public need for orderly and harmonious growth. Since 2012, there has been one rezoning along Rock Hill Road north of Highway 82, plus or minus .7 miles from the subject property. And in August 2012, that was 1646 Rock Hill Road, which was rezoned from R1 to RM based on error. That was the determination. And then consistency with the comprehensive plan. The proposed rezoning would generally be not consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies found in the city's comprehensive plan. The 2016 Comprehensive Plan has the area listed as an optional district. The optional district lists out four potential uses for that place type, the commercial option, industrial option, traditional neighborhood development option, and conservation subdivision development option. The zoning classification of R6 does not have any permitted uses other than single-family detached dwelling that fit into any of the use types that are in the proposed optional districts in our comprehensive plan. Land use compatibility. Proposed rezoning could be considered consistent and compatible with adjacent land uses in the vicinity. There are three mobile homes located directly to the south of the property and one single-family home to the east. This slide lists the permitted and conditional uses for the existing and proposed zoning. On April 9, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted four-to-zero to recommend approval based on change in condition and public need with one recommended condition, and that was only one mobile home be allowed on the property.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Corbin. Anyone have any questions of Ms. Corbin? Okay, is the applicant with us, please? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Patton?
Superior Patton.
Thank you for being here.
Hey, just a couple of things. When I came in on the 9th, someone did come up to oppose the rezoning of the land. Her main concern was bringing down the value of the land or of the neighborhood, and to that, I just wanted to say, my mom, out of, there are four acres right here, the acre to the south of my acre, right there, that trailer right there has been there for years. My sister was the first one out of the four acres that was just all trees. She was the first one to occupy that. Her trailer burned down, and that is the trailer that was put on that land, and my mom lived there until she went through a divorce, and she lost it in a repo. So, the purpose of me purchasing the land next to it was to give my mama a place where, you know, that she was used to. She's moved around several times since she's moved from, you know, her original place, and I want to give her some of comfort. As far as bringing down the value of the land, the lady who came to oppose, she was saying that trailers are less than houses and so forth and so on, but I am surrounded by trailers, and I'm next to where the old landfill, I'm the closest acre to the landfill. Across the street, there are trailers, and there's a club right there, City Limits. So, me myself, in 2016, I had a brick home built 2,300 square feet on Butler Road, which is less than half a mile from this land, I'm a walking distance. So, I'm not going to do anything to the land or on the land that's going to bring a disturbance to the neighborhood or to myself, because I live near, you know, here too.
Yes, ma'am.
So, that was pretty much what I had to say, because of the condition. The condition was put on the land for one trailer to be on there to satisfy the person who came up.
And is that okay, is that condition okay with you?
I said okay to the condition, but they did, I said okay to go forward, because I am planning to put one trailer on the land right now for my mom. But in the meantime, like in the future, if she decided to do something else, they let me know that she would have to come back before the board, which is fine. I mean, she's almost 60, so I don't think she's going to try to do too much.
Ouch.
I think she'd be happy with a one-trailer.
I beg to differ. All right, thank you so much. The board, Vice Mayor Perkins?
Mayor, I'm going to move approval of this request with the one condition, and just want to say for the record that we've allowed, we, the board and the governing body here has allowed mobile homes in this area, and this area has a noticeable amount of mobile homes in this Rock Hill area. So, it's not uncommon for a mobile home to be here. It's not like we're allowing a mobile home to fit in a very high-density residential neighborhood. So, this request, in my opinion, will not make this area incompatible with the presence of this one mobile home. But, Ms. Patton, we're, I'm making a motion, substitute for the board, getting a second approval, that we approve your request with the condition that only one, and only one, mobile home will be allowed on this parcel in question.
And Vice Mayor, if I let me hold a public hearing...
Sure, sure, I just want to say, make that...
Yes, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Absolutely. Anyone else like to ask Ms. Patton any questions before I open it as a public hearing? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am. Okay, now is my opportunity to open it as a public hearing. Anyone speaking, wishing to speak in favor or in opposition, now would be your opportunity. All right, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing, and Vice Mayor, would you like to make that motion again?
Certainly, Mayor. I move approval of the request in question with the condition that only one mobile home shall be in, is only allowed on this parcel in question.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Do I have a second? I have a second from Alderman Sistrunk. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it is unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, moving forward, we have one special event request, which is the Starkville Foundation of Public Education to hold a Hannah Pope Run for 2019.
We do need to add a condition that insurance be provided 20 days prior to the event.
Okay, so the insurance, insurance condition, all right.
Mayor, I move approval with that added condition.
All right, I have a motion from Alderman Walker for the Hannah Pope Run, would the insurance condition be added? Did I hear a second from Alderman Sistrunk? Okay, second from Alderman Sistrunk. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of three to two, motion carries. All right, under Finance Administration, we have a claims docket.
Move approval.
We have a motion for a claims docket from Alderman Walker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistrunk. Discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, by a vote of three to two, motion carries. All right, moving down, under Human Resources, we have one that's, or two that are left, one's a request authorization to hire Jody Hoag as a municipal court clerk in the municipal court department. Do I have, do I have a motion?
Move approval.
I have a motion from Alderman Carver. Sorry, I was going to make you Alderman Parker. Alderman Carver. Second? I have no second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Walker. All right, now, discussion?
Mayor, we'll make the record clear that this would be at a grade 13, annual salary of $46,500, six-month probationary period. Thank you.
Okay, included in the record. Alderman Vaughn?
We didn't advertise outside for this, y'all, did we?
Did we advertise outside?
We did advertise outside for this.
Anything else, Alderman Vaughn?
How many candidates did we have? How many candidates did we have? How many candidates did we have?
We had 13 candidates apply.
But how many did we interview?
How many did you interview?
We interviewed four.
All four of them from here, from our department?
We had two candidates from the inside.
Come on up.
And we had two candidates from outside.
And let's go through that again, so it's on the record.
We had a total of 13 candidates had applied. We interviewed four of the candidates. Two of them was in-house, and two were outside candidates.
Okay. All right, nothing else? All right, any other questions?
What is grade 13 at 46, what was the figure?
26.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All right, if not, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of four to one, motion carries. And second item is a request authorization to advertise for the deputy court clerk in the municipal court department.
Move approval.
I have a motion from Alderman Walker, have a second.
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistrunk. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, by a vote of five to zero, motion is, it's unanimous, thank you. All right, moving along, I believe, no, yep, that concludes our public session, and we will now go in, or we'll now see about a vote to go into closed determination session to determine the need for an executive session. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
I have a motion from Alderman Walker, have a second.
Second.
Second from Alderman Carver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will now go into executive, in a closed determination session to... Okay, I believe that's it. All right, the board has voted to go into executive session to handle two matters, one relating to the Starkville Cemetery Trust and the ongoing job performance of SPD officer and a utilities employee. So, we will, if you would, again, clear the room, and we will go into executive session. Thank you so much.
We're gonna do that. Motion exit. Who made the motion exit?
I did.
Arm the sister and get it on the walker second.
That was right.
Okay, everybody back in. All right, thank you very much. In executive session, the board took action. Mr. Lattimer.
The board approved the disciplinary recommendation of Chief Nichols relating to an SPD officer.
And before we adjourn, I would say there will be a work session of the mayor and board of Altonon on Friday, May 17th at 12 o'clock. It's start with City Hall located 110 West Main Street on Second floor conference room. The public and media are invited to attend. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Recession, I'm sorry, recession.
So moved.
Motion of Altonon's on the second?
Second.
Second from Altonon's sister. All is in favor, can you see about the same eye?
No.
Opposed? Okay, so we adjourn or we sit.